Would you like to proceed, ma'am? Would you like to proceed, ma'am?
Yes, please.
This special meeting of the Mayor's Council, the Borough 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 Council, this agenda is complete today. The agenda is complete today. The agenda is complete today. The actual, we take in the actual, we take in the actual, the councilway limits, the councilway limits, and the running time, or the running time, and the order of time, or the order of time, in order to ensure, in order to ensure, and allow adequate time, and allow adequate time for the public to be heard. Please stand for the president. Please stand for the president. And I just wanted to mention that, I just wanted to mention that, yes, on August 23rd, August 23rd, 2021. I will now call, call, I will now 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 call, Mayor Breon, Mayor Breon. Mayor Breon, Mayor Breon.
Here.
And you're now at the discussion of the redevelopment process. All of you guys are going to start. All of you guys are going to start.
We need more, 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 okay, thank you. Paul Greigel, the Borough, Paul Greigel, the Borough, redevelopment, other issues, redevelopment, other issues. Great to see a number of you here today. Great to see a number of you here today. Recent meeting at the wing, recent meeting at the wing. Thank you. On the bottom topic of redevelopment. And how this works. And what it means for the Borough. What it means for the Borough, and all of it, and others, and so on, and others. So we, so we, so we, a broad overview, a broad overview, and a discussion of, and a discussion of questions they have, and questions others have, regarding this topic, and this process. Like I can, as I can see. Continuing. So, so New Jersey's local, New Jersey's, like, has a, like, has a, like, has a, like, has a, New Jersey's development, New Jersey's development, and housing. Set forth procedures, that municipalities may utilize to, to the redevelopment process. It's a very specific term, it's a very specific term, redevelopment. The state law essentially outlines criteria for municipalities to designate areas, designate areas, either, you know, like, of the limitations, you sort of, of the lowest level, or the lowest level, or the criteria, or the criteria regarding, how, how, infrastructure, infrastructure, and then steps up to, and then steps highly, and utilizing, utilizing, and it's, 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 a non-condemning area of redevelopment. And then above that, it's, 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 by the government, by the government. CBD, and the, 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 non-condemning area designation, redevelopment area designation. What does that mean? What does that mean? So, 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 the, 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 one or more region, that designated area can be designated, either redeveloped, or redeveloped, that's, I know that's, 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 the old days, only applies to, only applies to, only applies to, with the law, it allows you, it allows you, to, 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 outdate their, outdate their, outdate their, outdate their, health and safety issues, health and safety issues, and condition of building, and condition of building, conditions such as, whether there's, whether there's, whether there's, whether there's, property being vacant. Those, the, 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 that can be, that can be, for redevelopment designation. Focusing only on central business district, not why, 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 two other areas that are, previously have been designated, as redevelopment area process, similar process, similar process, were taken some kind of, in the past, at different times, in the past. So, so, the overall, the overall, the overall, the overall, desire by municipalities, beyond its standard, maintenance procedures, and, 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 that something happens, and being more correct, and having, and having, more of the control, and more of the control, and the redevelopment allows, and the redevelopment allows, and the redevelopment allows, and the redevelopment plan, and the redevelopment plan adopted, should be adopted, that takes over, or the, or the, typically have. And the redevelopment, and the redevelopment, to have more detailed, more detailed standards, and use sense, and use sense, designing of buildings, design of buildings, things such as, streets, things such as, streets, getting building materials, things that normally accounts, things that normally accounts, of, 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 redevelopment plan allows, redevelopment plan allows, for other powers, other powers, well, globally, the legal council, some of the, you know, some of the, you have, you have, you have things, but you have financing, but you have the financing, bonding, tax abatements, tax abatements, under some circumstances, what type of designation was enacted. The point of all this, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, you know, they, 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 I've heard of this, so, 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 designation must be made, and then once it happens, and then once it happens, then in the case where it's central business, they, 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 once the mayor and council will, on the designation, on the designation, then it allows, then it allows many steps to be undertaken. One question that came up a lot, a few weeks ago, what's the plan? What's the plan? Must be a plan. As I said before, and I'll say it again, you can't have a plan, you can't have a plan, until, you have that, for Bay Avenue. No, sorry, yeah, sorry, 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 we should say, we should say, we're, 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 one second, assuming that happens, assuming that happens, then, then, it's time, to open the process, to open the side, to outside, to outside, to, 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 and so, their next, and so, their next meeting is, the second of September, and we're expecting that at that, and we're expecting that at that, we need those recommendations, to send recommendations to council, and then the next step for the council, the next step for the council, is what they're following, the council meeting, which I believe, top my head is a fifteen, top my head is a fifteen, September thirteen. We will take, we will take, we will discuss, whether we are going to take their recommendation or not, and then the next, and then the, that would make, if that's actually happening, the designation happen, and the next step is to make, and the next step is to make, and the next step is to make, planning, 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 to have people involved.
And I'll just add, and I'll just add, okay, I'll just add to, 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 this is a process, and this is, and this is, and a longer process, which involves a number of areas, and how it is being redeveloped, and how it is being, to, 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 and every redevelopment, and every redevelopment process, and you need, and specific to the situation before it, so, the two redevelopment plans that were developed prior to this, had their, had their, different, discussion, different discussions involved in that, and in this particular redevelopment process, considering the number of companies involved, it's going to be a different process, and it's going to be, consider a lot of community engagement, but all of that process is going to be happening, and there's more participation of this movement.
Not just that, not just that, not just that. The Land Affairs Board, the Land Affairs Board, certainly has its statutory role, it's not just, governed by your mayor and council, by state law, again, by state law, again, by state law, gives up, gives up, or either, the terms, or either, the, or 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 the, and, completely, completely, you know, with your views, with your views, with your, with your views, multi-opportunity, multi-opportunity, to, with these two ideas, and, 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 very minimal, at least, very minimal, at least, on one end, a hearing, on the other end, the, 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 the,
At this point, is there anything that anyone, is there anything that anyone, for this process? This process? Okay, so let's, let's chat a little bit about, what we do, what we do, especially all of these parts, all of these parts, like, one hundred and fifty-five, piece of last property, last property, last property.
So, yes, so, going, 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 one central business, one central business district, that all of them lies to, 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 certainly there's different characters, certainly there's different barriers, of, of, block fronts along, block fronts along, the entire corridor, the entire corridor, the Bay Avenue, the Bay Avenue, block to block, it might be, block to block, it might be different. And, 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 so, 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 desire, desire to, one-size-fits-all approach, not, not, sometimes, sometimes, life experience, background, like, took it to the back of, like, for like, twenty years, of, 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 desire to municipalities, on development, development, zoning, uh, throughout New Jersey and beyond, throughout New Jersey and beyond, and, 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 what they're, what they're doing here, desire to have an approach, certainly have an approach where governor looks and says, we want to focus on this one, or this one, or this one, or this, 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 other types of standard, other types of standard, on, on, when you go to a, 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 going material, landscaping, streets, landscaping, streets, all types of different things, all types of different things, the point is, it's really, the point is, it's really, it's, put it in the back of, like, 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 with the plan, but, but, yeah, Highlands has had a lot, and, 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 a lot of, 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 a lot[746.88]
Well, I'll say the first part of the episode, the first part of the episode is very interesting. You know, we were discussing that, or you could do five six, or you could not do that. Five months, one year, three months, four years, but I don't think much about that. So I'm not going to put that switch on, uh, well, I was telling my experience, I was telling my experience of all that. That ought to get it all. First thing I've done, first thing I've taken, changed what I've taken, law allows for that, the law allows for that. That's not wrong, uh, law allows for that.
I mean, you can see, I was thinking from a, uh, I know, I know, we know, in the middle of the night, we know. We are seeing like that, we just see our, like, you know, the parts that do the, they're developing, so you have to help them out. You have to prepare them a lot, you know, a lot, you know, try to get to this area now, this area now. Yeah, I don't know, but, you know, I don't know, but we can honest, um, it's just, it's just, it's just that. I don't know how that, I don't know how we develop, so we need to help them, so we can, we can, we can, we can, we can, we can. I think that's why, uh, Jay, if you have, uh, Jay, he's like, he's like, he's like, he's like. Yeah, I just said, the other thing is, I just, my other thing is, my other plan would be, if the plan counts, if these guys go on to, or gather, go on to, or gather, go on to, so. And there are, here, and there are these, here, it's all, yeah, here, is he, uh, did he probably chance to really, any chance for more? Or if the council just go down, and this is so, and this is just, we just do what they want, anyway, they want, anyway. Drop the, drop the, the reservation.
Can I answer that one? Can I answer that one?
I don't know if you were told that we had a townwide cleanup for the residents.
In town.
I said early spring. We had a townwide cleanup for the residents.
That was very, very substantial. Using that process.
I wrote a letter. A personal letter to all of the businesses.
And explained that program that we had.
And asked those folks to...
Explain to the businesses now.
Explain to the businesses now. To pick up their property. And another thing. I also gave them...
All of the information for...
All of the information for murals and other jurisdictions. That's run by the town. And a couple of those folks went out and got those grants. So sometimes Jesse speak up and say...
It's your turn now to get back to the town.
I mean, some didn't grant it. I mean, some didn't grant it. I'd rather plate to the president.
Well, that may be a better policy. That may be a better policy. Making this thing a better policy. Of these hoodies, twenty seconds, and that's the criteria. There's awful, awful lot of them. There's awful, awful lot of them. Because they were chatting with...
Which is chatting with...
Which is letting you have the trash in the yard. Look at Chris Stone. Now, this is my... This is my... My... Of course, in the... Of course, in the... This is my... Would change some... They'll change some words. Some words. So that one property... So that one property... Said they... Then they... Then would be a use for the end or a use for the end.
For instance, right now, where there are...
There are lines. Side lines. Side... Side line. Capital... Capital puts in requirements to require further sidelines. Further sidelines. Lower buildings or higher buildings. And where they're going to be... Where they're going to be...
Right, the way that the plan starts. The way that the plan starts is you take our existing... Uh...
Uses?
Uses. In our existing... That's in our current... Who's law.
And then you say, "Okay."
And then you say, "Okay."
I know what you're saying.
I know what you're saying. Hidden cities used to have an arcade. An arcade.
Changed that, so it became...
So it's no longer a home.
I think another thing is that...
One other thing is that it wasn't... You're not allowed to have tattoo cards. If all of these different more things...
So hidden cities uses...
But hidden cities uses... As part of this plan, we could make those...
Acceptable.
To be acceptable.
It's things like that.
It's things like that. It's not just how tall the building going is.
Other things such as...
Other things such as...
Allowing uses.
Allowing uses that...
That you no longer...
That you no more... Undesirable. Undesirable. Where these policies are making sixty percent...
To arcades.
To arcades. Now, that went to towns that the town fathers didn't have. So that's what they didn't have. So that's why they were... The prohibited... Prohibited...
Prohibited use... Prohibited use... Because they had that we already... That we already exist to act with. Act with businesses in the essence right now. The essence for the...
But for a new... But for a new gas station or new oil...
As long as those operators do it.
The operators do it. But if the operators wouldn't be allowed... Well, we could pass an ordinance. Well, we could pass an ordinance. It's always a way. It's always a way.
What we're saying is that your current...
Is that your current is gasoline station.
And you're going to continue to use it.
And they're going to continue to use it. It doesn't matter.
The plan doesn't matter.
The plan doesn't matter.
Continue to remain...
Continue to remain... And everything...
Exactly as they...
Exactly as they...
They want to pass down that business to the next generation.
To the next generation. They absolutely...
Still nothing changes that.
And still nothing changes that. Until they pass an ordinance. Until they pass an ordinance. And say, "You're not..."
No, no, no. Try to back that before. Try to back that before. You can pass an ordinance. You can pass an ordinance right now on this subject. Right now on this subject. That does not allow for central... That does not allow for central... That should be... That should be... People have to... Change their use of the property. Change their use of the property. As long as it saves... Or as long as they... Or as long as they... The gas station. Even if it's the owner. Property owner. Family member or you're not a family member. You're a law. You're a law. You're a law. It does not allow a town to say you're outlawed. Say you're outlawed and shut down. Cannot be changed for... A change in the permitted use of those.
Okay.
And by the way, and I agree with Chris Stone. You know, flood is a problem. Flood is a problem. And I can tell you my... And I'm sure you're aware of it. Early on, I made... And then the idea is that level one... Yes, level one. And start with town. And start with scratch by your side. They don't want to try to... They consented, folks. They consented, folks. And like the... The members. That's a good... That's a good... People who live in Highlands. People who live in Highlands know about more than... I would rather... I would rather that this... This new business is Highland. Be Highland. Be... Or... 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 Or they tap on your big plan. High on the big plan. And we'll be able to do something. You know, protect them. Make them pray. And... The best thing in church. The best thing in church. My yours is very nice. My yours is very nice. But thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks.
So just to give you back... So just to give you back...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
What this town... What this town's town opera... This town opera is often not... Not... Charles James Day five. Sanders and... And... Uh... Um... They... We don't need that. We don't need that. We're... Uh... Um... I still thought that ours... I thought that ours is a great serious action, right? If the word... And if the word... Because there is... There is such a... Where it can... Where it can't monolization. Monolization. Still partly yes. Still partly yes. Now, we're not just now... And we're just... And we're not... So we're... So we're clearly... Finally, from this whole thing. A whole... Uh... After council, everyone could vote to find that. It ever.
I don't want to answer that. I don't want to answer that. Um... So... So fortunately, I have to give you this one. Legal question. It's a legal question. Our... Statute... Statute... Statutes give us a power.
What are the powers they have?
What are the powers they have? This government body... This government body has a future of... We have the ability to change this... Statute. Statutes. Is what it is. They need to be decided. When it's... Passes law. Passes the law. And then it's... How do you have this place?
Um...
Um... Redevolving and destruction of these... Powers, how do you please have? So... So there is no way for the government body... There is no way for the government body to commit to...
Not have a police power.
Not have a police power, which is fair in Jersey D.
So it gives an option for... To essentially... Essentially... Not... This pretty much... Or... The one that come after it. The one that come after it. Um... Um... Essentially, I mean, essentially, when anyone's... In a way, non-contaminated... Non-contaminated... Putting it on... Spreading... That was... So the guy who said it... So the guy who said it, do they have to... Go ahead and tell her? Go ahead and tell her? Or that only happens? That only happens in commonwealth.
So the... So the redevelopment process is... Um... Means to power the broad powers. Do we negotiate with property owners? So... So annihilation is going to be annihilation of property owners. Uh... We need a power to negotiate with directly. Or it's to negotiate with redevelopment. Or it could be common. Um... So it could be combination. Working with property owners. Um... We have... Um... So if there's broad powers to do...
Either of those. Either of those. Any of those. And then if you... And then if you have a state redevelopment area... Um... Would the town... Would the town have... Would they work out and... And that's out? Because they're not... Because they're not redevelopment areas. I would imagine... I would imagine... Which is not essentially... Something that's... Something that's... Rebuilding areas. Rebuilding areas. Some of them have... I have a... I have seen that we want it. But... But... My town, because I'm in town, because I've got my way. I've got my way. Just sort of... I've got my way. But I've got to say this. But I've got to do this. But I've got to... I know... I know that I'm going to do this. And I'm going to... But I'm not... But I'm going to... You know, I'm going to... So... So... Um... Um... Yeah, just because... Yeah, just because it does put the town to... It does put the town to combat... To combat a renovation. If you're not... But if you're not of the area... Of the area. They still have the power. Still have the power. And they want to do the renovation. If you're not in the redevelopment area.
If you're not included in the... If you're not designated. If you're not designated.
Yes, yes.
Um... If you're not designated. If you're not designated. Then this probably would have to start. This probably would have to start. If I'm... A fall... A fall would have to go out. And do everything that you don't have to do. You have to... Evaluate the property. As you have to... At that time. If you cannot... Try a validation. Go back and... Go to the property. And reassess the property. And at that time. Everything that you have to do for this time. Um... Yes, that is. Allow that to walk. But that's what you have to do. You have to do that. And reasoning... As the time. As the time that I think is questioned by... Excuse me, that's the time.
So is it easier going to... Going to... If you're already... If you're already...
I... I wouldn't think so. I wouldn't think so. No, I think they are... No, I think they are separate. You decide from the beginning. You decide from the beginning. If you have them in discussion. Whether you want to have them on... Or do you want to have them on... Which you have as a long time. Which you have. Um...
But okay, you know, these stop... You know, one of these actors. One of these actors. You have to go around your... Go around your...
I think that's why it's very important. That's why it's very important for those. Who are those? Who are those who are offsetting their views? Who are offsetting their... For condemnation, support, or redevelopment? Both are those... Both are those people. Both represent your views. Who represent your views. Whether it's me or the... Whether it's council or successive council. It's... That's why it's important. That's why it's important to...
I think it's also important to remember... That we're not in the midst... We're not in the midst of the town's discussion right now. Even if this town council was considering an area... Without condemnation. Without condemnation. That we could... The council at any time. Council at any time. Yes. Yes. Exactly. Exactly. Exactly.
And there's no flavor. And there's no flavor.
There's no flavor of behavior. For condemnation. And I would be very suspicious of the council person. Of second thing. Of third thing. No, no, I'm saying anybody in subsequent... I would be concerned. I would be concerned if there was. The council were not... Were not... Your judge is not going to happen. Not with this to the back. Not with this to the back. I think that it's... Very important to remember... To remember that... That this particular tool... This particular tool can be used to... To... Um... Convince or to... Draw people in. Draw people in. Who have been hesitant. To do anything with that property. This is a... This is a... A tool where the council and the council... And the poll has been saying previously. There are little interest loans that are there. Perhaps different grants. Um... Maybe they're... We wind up selling to a developer. What's the plan? What's the plan? It's been crushed out. So it is a way... It is a way... Encouraging... Encouraging people to do something. To do something. Um... A new way. A new way. Get things off the ground. Get things off the ground. Instead of just having... Doing empty property. For a property. For a property. That's actually been deteriorating over very many years. Over very many years. Developer may come in and say, "You know what?" And say, "You know what?" I really like... So I really like to purchase your property. And... And the requirements. Or the wants and needs of the town. And then the person who didn't have the money. To develop your property. Or no interest in doing so. You know, be more apt to do it.
It's all... Two oh five, they have... Two oh five, they have... You know, I want to go back... You know, I want to go back to the last time they... Last time I had a... I had a... So this time I visited this town. This is... In this... So far as the breakdown. And so far as the breakdown. I don't have... I don't have the... To get into... To get into any more council. Enough of council. Not the numbers. Oh, we have... Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. It's a... It's a... It's a... It's a... I want to show that here. So that here, so this president. A hundred presidents. He goes so old. He goes so old. He goes so old. Probably... Probably weird. That are part of weird. That are part of this. Thing. Thing. It's... It's... Listen to what I think. Now what's fine. And now what's fine. You know? You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? There. There. And, uh... You know, uh... I sit here on a picture. I sit here on a picture. A hundred and fifty-five multinationists. On they... On they, um... And it reminds me... And it reminds me of Saturday. Uh... The Saturday. Does anybody remember Saturday? I'm from the first mayor of... Of the... It's a... It's a... It's a... It's weird. Um... So the question is... The question is... What... What's germinated? What's germinated this time? I mean, obviously, you guys look at the... That... There is this... Resident's first... The residence's first businesses. And... Or you know... Or the... These... These... These politicians that have... Don't this year. Having to go off here. So... And we saw them there. And so... And I've run this. And I've run this. And here for several some years. And we've been... Blowing. 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 Blowing out. This has... That's what... You know, my art. You know, my art. I was so good at playing. I was... You know? Your people appreciate. Your people appreciate. You always think of that. You always think of that. Where you're building a shop. Where you're building a shop. Where the building... You know? That is a gold diamond. It's a gold diamond. You can buy some old property. And that old property should not... So then I go... Then get those rooms. So... And if he takes sort of... And if he takes sort of... And then it don't mean that... And then it don't mean like... I'm going to... I got a break. I got a break. I got a break. Alright? It's that four one... It's that four one five. On they have. You want to pay out. You... You... You handle them. You handle them. You... It's a... It's a... They... 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 They have... They have... They have... They have... They have... They have... Always the... Always the... That's service. That's service.
I feel exactly the way... I feel exactly the way that... You...
Well, as Mary Ann said, they're gonna get this.
Just anybody else who has.
Just says anybody else who has or trash that's.
Or trash that's.
I also think that, I also think that if a particular property owner does not have. The financials. The financials. To develop their property. To fix their property.
To meet what's happening around them.
What's happening around them. I think it's very. Mary Ann, we develop and make that property. Worth a lot more money. Worth a lot more money.
To the people that might wanna buy it.
That might wanna buy it. This actually helps us. This actually helps us. This actually helps us. This actually helps us with the taxes.
Because now instead of having these properties all over the town. You're going to have properties with buildings on them.
With buildings on them.
Be paying a much higher tax than they do now. You'll also have a tax.
A tax.
Multi-residents.
Multi-residents.
More people paying tax.
More businesses. More businesses.
More people paying tax.
More people paying tax.
In twenty eighteen, the previous council passed. A zoning ordinance that stayed in Texas state. Built and that because they required retail on the ground floor.
So that actually happened in twenty eighteen. When I say multi-resident. When I say multi-resident.
I'm talking about a building that houses.
That houses.
One plus one, two, three, four residences.
But if the night concerts have no alcohol. No alcohol on Earth Day has no alcohol. I see a craft fair. I see a craft fair and there's no alcohol.
Santa definitely has no alcohol.
I know what's watching. I don't know what's watching.
Miss Scott, I'd like to address something else we're talking about.
When I first moved here. I believe two thousand fourteen. We joined an organization called Community Hope.
Purpose of that was to help people whose yards were desat.
Total desat.
And this was, two, three years after. And they couldn't. They were older. They were older, they were issues or whatever. Clean water.
And exactly.
And we did. Exactly. And we did.
I don't even play. I don't care. Family places. If we want to.
That has to be. That has to be. That has to be. A volunteer. A volunteer. Perfect opportunity. Perfect opportunity. If you're a property and you're all they have. You've got issues. You've got issues. That can be. That can be.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm. I'm talking to people. But I think even on my. But I think even on my street right now.
A young couple bought tiny house. They're doing. Everything they can themselves.
And they started to plant.
And they started to plant a little bit.
And you know what's happening? And you know what's happening on the street? People are out there.
People are out there. Planting a little bit.
And I think it's, it's.
And I think it's, it's.
And hey, here's somebody digging. Here's somebody digging up.
I know they're out there. I know they're out there. I know they're out there.
I know I'm playing something. I know I'm playing something.
That's what I'm talking about.
I feel like we're up here. We're up here. We're moving here. We're down. We're down. We got a very square. We got a very square. I'm here. I'm here. We had a harder shop. We had a harder shop also. We got a cheap coffee. That's very, very good. I'm learning more things. I'm learning right now. And right now, we're at peace. So I hope that every zoning and every community, like we can lose other things. Rather than just far. And then there's cars and there's. It is the next thing. It is the next thing. Do a lot of that. Do a lot of that. So I don't feel now. No, I don't feel now. No, let's do it. Quit it. Let's do it. And let's do it. And this, we don't really get it. This, we don't consider it. But it's not listening. I rest you with that. I rest you with that. On that. Thank you. Thank you. Hi, Laura Keller again.
Hi, Laura Keller again. Good to meet you. I started off with one. I started off with my husband. My husband. Um, um, just for your. Just for your, it's a marketplace. It's a marketplace. Whoever is looking for you. Whoever is looking for you. They didn't have any.
It's up to them. It's up to them.
I didn't want to buy it. No, I didn't want to buy it. No, I didn't want to buy it. I didn't go to a bar. And I didn't go to a restaurant. I didn't pay out to bakery. They have all day. They're all in the house and they go. Her. I'm sorry. Her, her lady. I'm sorry. Her, her lady. She's similar.
Gay, correct?
Gay, correct?
But the question I can't.
But the question I can't. Of your horse. Who's the plan?
I walk people down the.
I walk people down the. I walk two. I walk five or six. I host it. I have a center for our stadium since twenty seventeen. They literally boarded up. They literally boarded up the main yards. The whole main yards.
What is the plan to address things outside of the area? Something we've done.
The short answer is this process. This process.
Go outside the boundary.
Go outside the boundaries of the dominated area.
Obviously, the municipality can.
Obviously, the municipality can do other actions. Do it. Regular planning and zoning powers.
Do other redevelopment.
Do other redevelopment.
Investigations of it.
Investigations of it. But this process, again. I don't like to say it, but. I don't like to say it, but. You have to say it. You have to say it. You have to have a designation of area. And you can't. An extender there would be nice. An extender there would be nice. That's the why. That's the why it's going to run continuing as well. There's nothing to say you couldn't have a study. Nothing to say you couldn't have a study. The area. Fly the area. You've got to find different. You've got to find different to do that. But if we're focused on redevelopment. And what's currently. And why it's for this. Has approved.
Contact and will at the next meeting.
Send off to the. Send off to the. It's for that the linear area. Coincides with the. Coincides with the. Central business.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Hello, everybody. Charles O'Grill. Everybody.
So, um, sorry, this is the first time I've been to the United States. I'm not even close to them, but they're going to be able to let them remember here. They'll never hear of me. I'm highly suspicious. I love your citation that the American people that got out of that call my daughter, that we always had. I might as well be always sad and see my kids really have to see their faces back and have to go back. Um, speaking of this, oh, no, I'm not one of those who are similar to us. We have to deal with it, basically, and still be personal, nine personally, nine. They're always like, they're not, they always let, or we go more well, or we go for slow. Not only regular, not only regular, but they are on top of the day, they're personal, and they're there for water. They're doing all the, they're doing the nation, they're taking patients, they're all you're doing, that's phenomenal. Phenomenal, what's wrong, you're doing phenomenal, you're doing phenomenal. That's why, that's why. There's lots of way down there, there's lots of way down there also, you see about rarity, there's so much rarity that there's so much way that I don't know. That has a cheaper than have one of them, that's just one of the same type of cheaper than having a lot of it. I was having a black cat, that is why I'm here, this year back thirty thousand dollars a year on three. Uh, based on what they're doing, I think I understand, I think I understand. Um, the tax liability, most of the, the tax liability, obviously, the tax liability, obviously, they develop, they develop. The taxes come in, the taxes come in, they're vulnerable, so, um, I'm hopeful for that. Big part about this, big part about this, non-compete, as you mentioned, so, you're asking, is it with other people? You might, you might, despite, I can say they might, sometimes they don't, this will allow us, they play the power, yes. Now's the chance, because now's the chance, because probably the people that are, you don't think about that. You don't think about making it easier on us, it's easier on them, faster, to make you pop up faster, but no matter what, and the no matter what, and the danger without help. I think you know, Barry, since you don't have Barry said, they don't have anything said, they want zero, we have zero. Can we develop, can we develop, we can do the whole things, I've got to say, the problem we've been learning, and we're all seeing what we've been learning, and we're all seeing if we can. Although, or this, the real list, everybody's in residence, everybody goes to some towns that we want, that's what this process is for. They also, we talked about, so, we talked about forcing act orders out, I was like, I'm so done, I'm so done. I get the fact, I get the value of your, like, your value of your, like, increase from the dollars, it's a number. You have a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollars, you have over your tax numbers, we're still not here. It's still not, whatever you say, whatever you say, whatever you have, or not, using that, or not, or the tax debt that we have. He's not different. Um, as developer, as person, I am going to, I am going to, who, I purchase, and I'm going to, they'll just sell. They'll, I'll sell all terms, I want no terms, and falling out, I'm going to be falling out, always going to be, I want that, so, I want the people, I want the whole shop, I want the whole shops, I want these people. Ten decent people, we are not looking to, we are not looking to sell hundreds of things, sell hundreds of things, a real highway thing, a real highway thing, we're looking to be here, but there's about the whole paradise, eight off the whole paradise, eight off things, those across the map. And I have migraines, yes, I have migraines. Um, right, um, and I just want to say, I just, and I just want to say, I just want that there's something else, that there's something else, that there's something I would want to say, and I still look at, we get people, we have, we are people, and that we have. And now we have, I can't wait, I can't wait, I see this company that I like, my people that finally get our answers, I don't want to see their answers, what have we been doing all this, what have we been doing all this, how many years? No, thank you, everyone, for doing what you're doing, thank you, everyone, for doing what you're doing, I'm available anytime, I'm available anytime, I'm glad, I'm so glad, I'm so glad, for so much, I'm very certain, for the place, I'm concerned, for the future.
Thank you. Hi, there, I'm here, I'm out there, I'm in my office, I'm fine, Hillside Court. I just want to follow up on something, Charlie was saying, he also said something, he said, I don't know, but it's been a long time, that even we are moving, that we used to start working, when I found you, my parents, when I found you, my parents, for fifteen years, literally, fifteen years. For working at the public, for. Talking about Xanadu, we were like, two thousand and eight, and they actually started building Xanadu in two thousand and four. And it just sat there, and these groups, one after another, were turning, were turning into something, where it just never happened, it just never happened. Mr. Self said, it's true, that was fifteen years, fifteen years. But Xanadu State, it's called, the Americans are not, Xanadu today, Xanadu today, is home of the Nickelodeon, the Indian Park, the Indian Park, the Indian Park, in the western, it's the home of the dream water park, the Indian Water Park, the Indian Water Park, in North America. If anybody wants to see, and they don't want to wait, it's the winter, you can go to the, it's snowing, it's North America's first, only indoor, year-round, speed and smell, it looks, like it's indoor, it's indoor, it's indoor. And so, Xanadu sat there, and more than a decade, the more than a decade, the people kept saying, what are we doing, driving, what are we doing, driving, what are we doing, what are the people doing? Sounds a lot like how I feel, driving people, what are people going to do something about, how are we going to have to start passing places, it's still, it's still, it's still. Much like, so, much like, the right company, the right company, and whatever mess they've made, twenty years, twenty years, like, American, whirling on the Xanadu, by yourself, when it's, oh, it's so, when I go there, it's really cool, it's really cool. I know all the growth, but we're front of yours, so each of us, we know we can have a good time at all, so, when you're wondering, when you're wondering about examples, now, something, a dog, a sitting, a dog, a turn into a permanent, a turn into attraction, for residents, for residents, for people from Jersey, people from Jersey. Take a look at that, take a look at the Americans, take a look at the Americans, and I'm one of them, and I'm one of them, we're sitting highlands, we're sitting highlands, it's just what they have. Thank you.
I am the guy you guys know, they, um, they stand, they, um, absolutely, I am, absolutely, and I say house, and I buy a house, I buy, and it's, um, that is, that works, that works, I do live in this, I do live in this, and I'm, um, myself, I'm surprised, I have pieces of some cats, that's dead, I have a guy from younger age, I have a guy from younger age, that's with the baby. Couldn't get the, couldn't get the whole baby, all the baby, because we need, I'm a very incumbent, I'm a very incumbent member, we have now, members, we have now, because they want change, change, and the work we take, and the work we, everybody gets, because everybody gets a change, and we're playing the hour, we're playing the hour, we're playing this, our tax, our taxes, and we're not getting anything, and we're not getting any more, because that's why, and how, we're all taxes, and how, I come from Jersey, I come from Jersey, for New, I was going there, I said this, I was going there, I said this, and I was going there, I was going there, I was going there, I'm, I can't even, I can't even, I can't even allow us, went down here, went down here, and we need more of this, so we need more of this, and if we have to, um, that's we do, coming down, what, what is, what is, what is trying, very healthy, very healthy, and they're saying, if you have your, if you have your, in this, and you're saying, I don't want to be, you're saying, I don't want to be a lot, you don't have the data, because you don't have a data, everybody's thinking about this, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, like, oh, I want to gather, I want to gather, just want to gather, I want to build, but how do you start getting, when things start getting, I'm just wanting to find, you're going to go, because we're going to go, it's piece of pop, I know, it's a piece of pop, and I'm going to put it all down, and I'm going to, that's what I want to survive, and this is, this is, we're going to make a new order, we're going to make a new order, we're going to sell it, that's what we're going to do, we're going to create, we're not controlling, we're not controlling, because you're going to, you're going to, we're going to, now, my, now, as, as my options, because I'm not going to get, I'm not going to get tired of more, this desire, how are we going, I'm not paying that, I'm not paying that, so, it's my stuff.